Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. My name is Ed Flynn. I am the City Council President. Viewers can watch the City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. I'd also like to ask all of us to be respectful of each other and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you might be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Lara, Counselor Luojin, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Worrell. We're not able to start the meeting right now because we don't have a quorum. A quorum is seven people. I do like to start the meeting at 12:00. We're in a brief recess until my colleagues come to this meeting. We're in a brief recess. Yeah, we do know. Mr. Clerk, can we go back to the roll call to ensure that we have a quorum? Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Lara, Counselor Luojin, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Worrell. A quorum is present. Now we can begin. I would ask my colleagues to please stay in this room so we can continue the meeting. If we have less than seven, we'll have to stop the meeting. Again, want to ask my colleagues to be respectful and be here throughout the entire meeting. Not necessary either to be using cellphones as well unless it's an emergency. At this time, I'd like to call on City Counselor Murphy to introduce our clergy for today. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Council President Flynn, and I am honored to join -- you can come up, Father -- Father John Curry, who is no stranger here to the council. Currently, Father Curry is the pastor of St. Peter's and Holy Family Parishes in Dorchester and St. Patrick's Parish in Roxbury. He is a neighbor, born and raised in St. Mark's Parish, and he is the tenth in a family of twelve children. Counselor Baker has him beat by one. He attended St. Mark's Elementary School, Boston Latin Academy, Lake Forest College, and then St. John Seminary. He was ordained in 1997 and will mark -- how many years? Twenty-seven? Coming up on 27 years in the priesthood this May -- or you have been in May. So he very much enjoys collaborating with the city. He checks in on me regularly, and I appreciate that. I know he probably does to my colleagues also. He works closely -- he's part of the priests with the fire department. He's had a tough week, so thank you for your support to our Boston Fire Department and their families, and just welcome. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Counselor Murphy and President. Thank you for the invitation to be with you and to pray with you again. Let us call upon the Spirit of the good and loving God, and let us pray. Loving God of all peoples, of all lands, of all fates, our days and times can seem burdensome, if not overwhelming. Uncertainty about the future can dominate our thoughts, even restrain our willingness to go forward. That is why we turn to you, for you are our hope that never disappoints, our wisdom that brings clarity to our minds, and our conviction to remain steadfast in seeking peace, justice, and love for all, especially those most in need, those who are most vulnerable, those on the margins of society. Gracious God, in a spirit of solidarity and conviction for the common good, the welfare of our great city and its people, we ask you to bless and keep each member of our city council and aid them in their deliberations today and every day, always mindful of their collective duty for the people they have been elected to serve. This prayer, in all the prayers of our hearts, our minds, and souls, especially for peace in our world, we raise to you confident in your love, your mercy, for you are our eternal God forever and ever. Amen.
Could you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, Father. Good to see you, Father. Thank you, Father Curry, for that wonderful prayer, but also for the important work you do, supporting so many families in need across the city. Mr. Clerk, could we ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Arroyo is here, that Counselor Flaherty is here, that Counselor Fernandez-Anderson is present, that Counselor Lara is here? We do have a couple of presentations that I would like to call my colleagues forward and introduce their special guests at this time. Let me ask Counselor Worrell to come forward and introduce his guest, then I'm going to ask Counselor Baker and Counselor Coletta, and then Counselor Mejia also has some guests as well. So at this time, Counselor -- Counselor Worrell, will you please come forward?
Thank you, Council President Flynn, and good to see so many people in the People's Room today. October is Food Justice Awareness Month, and as we know, there's still too many Boston residents who struggle with food insecurity, who live in neighborhoods that are aching to food deserts with few grocery options, especially for healthy food. In 2018, 18% of Dorchester residents were considered food insecure, according to the mayor's office and the USDA, and the citywide average was 15%. I know there are many great groups in Boston that are working at food pantries or nonprofits related to healthy food, but as a lifelong Dorchester resident, I want to honor a few people and businesses that are helping the residents of District 4 in our food battle for food justice. The first is Fresh Truck. If you want to come on down. Fresh Truck started 10 years ago by Josh Troutwind and Anika Morgan. Its mission was to use its big green truck to deliver fresh produce to communities that lacked healthy options. Fresh Truck still makes weekly visits to our communities in Roxbury and Dorchester, as well as East Boston, Brighton, Hyde Park, and Mission Hill. Fresh Truck became even more essential during the COVID-19 pandemic, offering safe and reliable options for healthy food when social distancing became the norm. Fresh Truck has gone beyond providing fruits and vegetables to those in need. They educated our communities on how eating healthier can help your well-being and creatively bridge the gap between healthcare providers and food suppliers to prescribe healthy meals for patients. It's a prescription from your doctor for healthy food, and it's actually a model that's catching on with other needs for low-income residents. So just love to recognize Josh, Shauna, for all their work in our community.
Counselor Worrell, thank you for inviting us to be here today. Thank you all for attending. This is a great honor. The city raised me. Really proud of what we've accomplished over the course of the last 10 years, really proud of all the partnerships that we built up. You know, it was a really scrappy grassroots operation from the outset, still part of our identity, something that we take pride in, even though we've grown a little bit, and that just wouldn't be possible without the DNA, the city just wrapping their arms around somebody that had a little bit of an idea and then helped them to turn it into a lot. Despite being really proud of all the work that we've done, we have a lot more work to do, and I think this is just a really good opportunity as one of the founders over the course of the last 10 years, having put a lot into Fresh Truck. To just name it, Shauna Weaver standing behind me is stepping in over the course of the next few weeks as our interim executive director of Fresh Truck to lead the organization into the future. And just so excited about the team that we have in place under Shauna's leadership. Skylar Brown is here with us as well, just an unbelievable group of people that are going to carry on what we've built up over the course of a decade with the same degree of mission orientation, just like rigor, toughness, all the stuff we know and love about Boston. So just thank you all. It's an incredible honor to be embraced by a city I love so much.
We're going to do this three times, so if I could ask my council colleagues to join us for a picture.
All right. The second group here today is Dorchester Food Co-op. And we have the president of their board of directors, Marco Bellici, as well as the treasurer, Jenny Silverman. The co-op just opened this month in Dorchester after a years-long process that the board took in which they encountered many obstacles. But in the end, they opened a gem of a store that's environmentally friendly, creates jobs, and fills a food need in the neighborhood. The store operates as a co-op, and its shelves and aisles are lined with fresh, affordable, and even locally sourced food. Outside, there's a movable garden with pots growing herbs, tomatoes, peppers, and other foods. Anyone can harvest from the garden free of charge. In just a couple of weeks, it's become a community go-to, and in Dorchester, it's been the talk of the town. I remember I was going at one of the events in Calmen Square, and everyone was talking about going to the grand opening for the Dorchester Food Co-op. And also, the opening day was one of the few weekends it did not rain during the summer. So with that said, I just want to recognize Marcos and Jenny Silverman for all their work that they're doing in the community, and give them a few moments for a few years.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. Thank you, City Council President Flynn, and all of you here today. We know that we have member owners amongst the folks here, the city councilors. Earlier, when we were in the reception room, Counselor Worrell mentioned that the three groups that are being recognized today have over 50 years of food justice work behind them. And I just have to sort of say that earlier during one of our meetings, I was thinking about how this is a movement that is not by necessarily choice or because we have nothing better to do, but because there is a need to sort of continue to advocate and fight for food justice. I recall as a child in a farmworker family, packing lettuce, tomatoes, and what have you, and at times being angry because it wasn't just about food injustice for us, that we couldn't eat what we were picking, but also labor injustice because of the wages that we were sort of being -- my dad was receiving. And so these issues continue to be a challenge and real for our community, so we're thankful for the recognition and for being part of this team. Thank you.
Don't mind joining us, and then we'll do it one more time. And if you're not a member of the Dorchester Food Co-op, please become a member. And our third group is the Food Pantry at the Barrera Seventh-day Adventist Church in Dorchester. The church is 110 years old, and its pastor, Decele Cadet, is here with us today. The Food Pantry, run by Linda Phoenix, has been serving those in need for decades. It currently has more than 20 members helping out and serves over 400 families on a biweekly basis. There are a few standout services from the pantry that we're also recognizing today. Darrell Jones, Roxbury-born and raised, has been serving diligently for more than eight years. His hard work, self-motivation, and consistent commitment make sure that nutritional needs for each family, and especially our seniors, are met. Amira Wallace was born and raised in Costa Rica, and she has been serving at the pantry for 27 years. Her love of people really shines through when she's serving people in need. And Carlton Williams, a native of Jamaica, has served at the pantry for more than 20 years. His warm-hearted and approachable demeanor helps him make a magnet for helping families in the need of the pantry. So I just want to just recognize the members of the Food Pantry that are serving our families on a biweekly basis. Seventh-day Adventist. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell, and everyone, for allowing us to be here and for recognizing the work that is being done in the community. Our church has been in the community for 111 years, and I'm so grateful to be leading a congregation that not only comes together to worship, but desires to be a part of the community and to also serve the community. Some of the members here have been doing this work longer than I've been alive, and I know that I stand on the shoulders of those who have sacrificed their time and their efforts, and I'm looking forward to continuing -- we're all looking forward to continuing to partner with our city so that we can continue to do right by the members of our community. God bless you all.
Please join us for a photo.
Yes, we're assembling for the photograph. I just want to say I'm excited to be able to receive this citation, and we are more than excited to serve the community, and we will continue to serve them as long as we have life, and we know that they do need, and we are happy that we're able to supply our partially support that need accordingly.
At this time, could I ask Counselor Baker and Counselor Coletta to please come forward? At this time, could I ask Councilor Baker and Councilor Coletta to please come forward? Could I ask Councilor, Mr. Clerk, can you ensure Councilor Coletta is reflected as present? Could I ask Councilor Coletta and Councilor Baker to please come forward and introduce their special guest today?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you. Today, I'm pleased to welcome Carla Nazaro. Carla, welcome. Yeah, you guys can come on up if you want. I thank the Nazaro family and her family to the City Council Chamber in recognition of the landmark status of the Nazaro Community Center in the North End. This center has served Boston and the North End community since 1910 as a bathhouse and then as a community center since 1985. It was named after State Representative Michael Nazaro Jr., a WWII veteran and lifelong resident of the North End. I'm thrilled to support the approval of this historic site to preserve the Nazaro family legacy and to keep this gem serving our residents in the North End. The bathhouse operated until the '70s, when it officially closed. In 1985, after years of neglect, the Boston Center for Youth and Families acquired the building and reopened it as a Nazaro Center, which would have happened under your father, Mayor Flynn. Named in honor of Michael A. Nazaro Jr., a former state representative and WWII veteran, lifelong resident of the North End, who advocated against urban renewal efforts in the neighborhood. Nazaro also successfully passed legislation at the state house to end the practice of insurance redlining in the community. It's only right that we honor the Nazaro family by the designation of the Nazaro Community Center as a landmark, and that will happen today, being pulled out of the green sheets. We're thrilled to do that. With that, I'll turn it over to District City Council, Councilor Coletta.
Thank you, Councilor Baker. I'm so thrilled to be here with the Nazaro family today. We know that the Nazaro Center is more than just a building. It's an integral piece of the fabric of the North End. It's literally in the center of the neighborhood, and rightly so, it's been called the heart of this community. It's where hundreds of kids grew up, where families convened, and where folks came together in the spirit of community to support each other. The Nazaro is a space where still people from all backgrounds come to find camaraderie, where they felt welcomed, seen, and valued. For those of you who don't know, well, now you do because Councilor Baker just said it, the Nazaro Center was named after Michael Nazaro Jr., who was a vital leader of the North End community. My understanding is that he gave up a promising and successful career in Washington, DC to come up and save his community from the BRA and their plans to demolish the North End as they had the West End. Among his many accomplishments, he succeeded in ending insurance companies' redlining of the North End and forced these companies to sell policies at reasonable rates to North End homeowners and business owners. He got funding for the ice skating rink on Stillman Street, and he lived there, or he lived on Hannover Street with his beautiful wife Jean, raised three wonderful daughters, Lorene, Adele, and Carla, and was so proud of his beloved grandchildren. Much of what we take for granted today in the North End exists because of Michael A. Nazaro, who gave everything up to rescue the North End from destruction. So I'm grateful to Councilor Baker, grateful to the Nazaro family for being here, and I'm so excited that this beautiful building is finally gonna become a landmark. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. This has been a long process to have this named as a landmark. Again, this was originally a bathhouse, which my husband grew up in the North End and used when he was a child. Under Kevin White, we named it the Nazaro Center in the '80s, and we began the process of landmark in 2017. So it's finally happening, and my father would be very, very proud. Thank you all.
Want to say anything?
Make sure that you folks get front and center.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pull that out of the end of the meeting and make it official.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well, Councilor Louis Jen, you have a presentation?
It's me.
Okay, okay. Is there anyone else that has? At this time, the chair would ask Councilor Mejia to please come forward and introduce her special guest for today.
Buenas tardes. ¿Cómo está mi gente? Presente, ¿verdad que sí? Así mimito. Okay. So we're going to just, we're gonna be filing a resolution later on, you know, in the agenda, but we wanted to uplift and do a public presentation for 32BJ. So I'm gonna be joined by my council colleagues, Councilor Louis Jen and Councilor Durkin, who are gonna be joining me as original cosponsors of this resolution. So I just wanted to publicly uplift the reason why we are here. We're gonna be voting to, in hopes of, on the affirmative on this resolution in support of 32BJ SEIU's cleaning contract campaign. They're currently undergoing contract negotiations. Their contract was expired at midnight on November the 15th, 2023, and it is important that the Boston City Council stands in solidarity with 32BJ janitors and that the City Council calls upon property owners and janitorial clients in the city of Boston to support the workers who clean their buildings, and calls on them to publicly urge the contractors they hire to offer strong standards for these essential workers in their next master agreement. 12,000 New England janitors, including over 5,000 who work in the city of Boston, are currently in contract negotiations and hope to achieve fair and reasonable goals of higher wages, more opportunities for full-time work and health, family healthcare, and better working conditions. These negotiations provide an important opportunity to recognize and reward the commitment of our essential janitors who personally sacrificed to keep Boston strong during the COVID-19 pandemic. As essential workers, janitors worked to keep our city safe while many people were able to work from home during the pandemic. Janitors risked their own health to ensure that buildings and public safe spaces were safe and sanitized, and they continue to do so every single day. In appreciation to our janitors seeking to obtain a fair and dignified contract that is reflective of their hard work and everything that they have done and continue to do to keep our city safe, I stand in solidarity with our 32BJ janitors. And so I'm gonna talk really quick from my heart because I think it's important, that's the only way I know how to flow, is that I used to clean offices with my mom when I was a kid, okay? And my mom, right now, is 74 years old and still too poor to retire because she's never had union representation. And so when I look at our 32BJ community and our beloved community, right, I think about all of the low-wage workers who are right now just fighting to make their ends meet, to keep food on the table, and to be able to live in one place long enough to make friends. And so when we're talking about negotiating contracts and when we're talking about helping to support and uplift our union workers, we have to recognize that at the end of the day, low-wage workers, janitors in particular, who are here, who come to this country looking for dignity, oftentimes with a suitcase full of dreams, and it just feels like a nightmare because as immigrants, we're always told to wait. And so this is an opportunity to affirm their dignity, to see that we value you, we see you, we respect you, and we're going to fight for you, okay? So in recognition of your hard work and in your campaign, 32BJ, I know that my colleagues stand with you today and always. So come on through. Thank you.
Good afternoon to all, and thank you for having us. My name is Antonio El Figueroa Duran. I am the field director for 32BJ in New England. We represent 20,000 janitors in Boston and Massachusetts. Thank you, Councilor Mejia, for your kind words and your commitment and for pushing, for passing or for submitting this resolution today. Our janitors clean in Boston and Massachusetts, commercial office buildings, biotech buildings, events like TD Garden, the Prudential, universities like Northeastern. All those buildings, right, were cleaned through the pandemic when people were working from home and they were there exposing their life, taking risks, going back to their family, and putting them at risk as well. And it's time to treat them like, some people were saying, right, they were essential workers then, and we're asking property owners, building owners, contractors, that this is a time to give them, right, tangible things instead of words of essential workers. So I want to say that this were, on top of the sacrifice, the janitors also took a hit economically, right, because of the inflation. So we're dealing with several challenges that the janitors have. This is why janitors are asking for a strong wage increase and, like Councilor Mejia said, more full-time work and a clear path to have full-time job with a paid employee, a healthcare paid by the employer. These janitors, 12,000 of them, several of them here with me today, are gonna be taking a strike vote this Saturday, October 28. And we will send a strong message to the contractors, to the building owners, and to the clients that we need strong improvements in that contract. We do not want to strike, but the janitors will strike if we need to. I want to thank the council for the support. I want to encourage the council to pass the resolution, and thank you very much for your time.
32BJ!
So you know it would not be a presentation without us taking a photo. Come on, colleagues. And I also just want to uplift again Councilor Durkin and Councilor Louis Jen for joining us on this fight. Thank you.
it now? Talk about now? That's the type of colleague I am, Counselor Mejia. Mr. Clerk, could you please read that in the record? We're gonna take that one out of order, please.
Document number 1645, Councilor Mejia offered the following: "A resolution in support of 32BJ SEIU's cleaning contract campaign."
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair calls on Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
I got the floor again. Well, I just want to rise and encourage my colleagues to stand in solidarity with 32BJ. I think that this is a gesture, I believe resolutions really affirm what we're trying to do and what our values are, in particular when it comes to low-wage workers and unions. I think that this is an opportunity for us to send a loud message that we are watching you, that we're paying attention to you, and when it comes to seeking restorative measures, this is definitely one way to do just that. So let's affirm their dignity and let's support this resolution. And I just want to make sure that I, we give an opportunity to Councilors Louis Jen and Councilor Durkin as original cosponsors to also have an opportunity to have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin. Councilor Durkin, you have the floor.
I stand in solidarity with 32BJ. As someone who represents a lot of universities and institutions, I know that these are some of the lowest-paid workers at some of the institutions that are in my district, and I just want to stand in solidarity with them as the granddaughter of a Spanish-speaking. At some point, he was janitor of my mom's high school, so it means a lot to me to stand in solidarity. And I've already committed to 32BJ to brush up on my Spanish skills because I gotta work on that. So I'm really appreciative of the opportunity to speak. I want to thank Councilor Mejia for her work here. You know, I think this is a real chance for the city council to stand in solidarity with workers, especially in District 8. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilor Durkin. The chair recognizes Councilor Louis Jen. Councilor Louis Jen? I'm sorry. Councilor Louis Jen, you have the floor.
Thank you. As we often say here on the city council, and as we should know, is that one job should be enough. But too often employers are stringing people along in part-time jobs for 10, 20 years so that people aren't able to get the full benefits of their work. And so if we believe and if we say that one job should be enough, we should support every effort to make that so, which means supporting you in this contracting effort, which means supporting you in the strike vote to make sure that you get what you deserve. I think that when we look at our buildings and the role that our janitors play, if we have a city that, buildings that look clean and that look good, it's because of you, and it's because of 32BJ members who are an integral member of the work that you do. You are not invisible. Your work is very present, and your work is important to the city. When I was in law school, I remember I would be in classrooms studying really late, and they should have kicked me out of classrooms, but the janitors let me sit, stay in the classrooms and worked and cleaned around me. And I often found a lot more in common with the janitors who were cleaning the classrooms than I did with the professors who were teaching in the classroom. So our city is a working-class city, and we gotta make sure that we stand by our working-class workers who build and who really make the city what it is. So you have my support yesterday, today, tomorrow, to make sure that one job is enough, and we'll make that so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Louis Jen. The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, President Flynn, and thank you so much to the makers of this resolution, and thank you so much for your work. I'm always so proud to stand in solidarity with my union brothers and sisters, my neighbors, my friends, my family in 32BJ. East Boston and Logan Airport is a gateway to our beautiful city, and we pride ourselves in being welcoming and inclusive of everybody. And I'm so lucky to be surrounded by so many 32BJ members in East Boston. And I just remember during the pandemic, we really did depend on you to keep our airport going and to keep our economy going. Your work is vital. As Councilor Louis Jen said, you are seen, you are heard. We support you during your negotiations. We support you in your efforts for a livable wage where one job is enough for safe wages or safe working environments and healthcare benefits. So just know that we stand with you, and I will always stand with 32BJ. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Coletta. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counselora. Counselora, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. 32BJ, gracias, mi gente. Se le agradece, se le quiere mucho. I want to take a moment to say thank you. So much of the work that 32BJ does is in support and in representation of some of our most marginalized communities. And cuando nuestra gente necesita ayuda, ustedes no se olvidan de ello. Y cuando lo necesitaba yo, no se olvidaron de mí tampoco. And I want you to know that, just as you don't leave any people behind, we are not going to leave you behind. I want you to know that you have my full support, in the council and out of the council. And I am grateful for all of the work that you do to make sure that our communities have not just a living wage, but a dignified life. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselora. Would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone like to, they have their name, please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Royal, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Worell, please add the Chair. Counsel Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of Docet 1645. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it.
No vote.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on Docet number 1645. Counselor Royal?
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louis Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louis Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia?
See.
Counsel Mejia, see. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worell?
Yes.
Counsel Worell, yes. Docet number 1645 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Congratulations. Mr. Clerk, we're on to, we're on to communications from her on to the mayor. Can you please read Docets 1625 and 1626?
Document number 1625, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $300,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 Mass Trails Grant awarded by the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, to be administered by the Boston Transportation Department. The grant will fund the enhancement of trails and trail access in the Dorchester community. Document number 1626, message in order confirming the appointment of Nikita Burns to the zoning commission as a residential organization member for a term expiring October 26, 2026.
Thank you. Both of these Docets 1625 and 1626, they'll be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation. We're on to reports of public offices and others. Mr. Clerk, can we read Docets 1627 and 1629?
Document number 1627, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modification to the Washington Park Urban Renewal Area, project number Mass R-24, with respect to newly-created so-called parcels L-25 and S-10. Document number 1628, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modification to the Washington Park Urban Renewal Area, project number Mass R-24, with respect to the newly-created so-called parcels L-49 and L-50. And document number 1629, notice was received from the mayor of her absence from the city on Monday, October 23, 2023, from 7:00 a.m., returning at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. These Docets 1627 through 1629, they'll be placed on file. We're going to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, can we do Docet 1373, please?
Document number 1373, the Committee on Government Operations to what's referred on August 30, 2023. Document number 1373, in ordinance to support public safety as the city doubles down on our public health-led approach to the crises of mental health, substance use, and unsheltered homelessness concentrated in the area of Massachusetts Avenue and Manlea-Cass Boulevard. Submit a report recommending that this docket ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Royal. Counselor Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Government Operations held an in-person working session on Monday, October 16, at 10:00 a.m., on Docet 1373, which was referred to the Committee on August 30, of 2023, and is sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu. I want to thank my colleagues, Counselor at Large Erin Murphy, Counselor President Flynn, Counselor at Large Julia Mejia, Counselor Sharon Durkin, Counselor Brian Worell, Counselor Liz Braden, Counselor Frank Baker, Counselor Rusi Louis Jean, Counselor Gabriela Coletta, Counselor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, for their attendance. I also want to thank the administration for attending. Dr. Bissola Ujikutu from the Boston Public Health Commission, the Executive Director, Tanya Del Rio of the Coordinated Response Team, Peter Moscuratello, or Moscuratolo, Boston Police Sergeant Daniel Humphreys, who's a Sergeant Detective with the Boston Police, Sheila Dillon, the Chief of Housing and Director of the Mayor's Office of Housing, Jen Tracy, who's the Director of Recovery Services at the Boston Public Health Commission, and Sam Fuchs, who's Assistant Corporation Counsel for the City of Boston. I also want to thank IGR for responding to all of the requests for information that we made at both the hearing and the working session, and were delivered prior to this vote today. I also want to thank our central staff, both of those, the hearing and the working session went multiple hours, I believe seven and nine hours, for the, seven hours for the hearing, nine hours for the working session. None of that would be possible without central staff and their work, and so I'm grateful to them for, for standing through that, that process. The proposal before you today would prohibit camps or camp materials on any public property, including sidewalks, streets, schools, or public parks unless authorized during a period when shelter is not available. During the October 16 session, counselors raised concerns about the broad language in the ordinance, and concerns were raised about emergency shelter space provisions, eligibility, and facility amenities. Counselors emphasized the need for a coordinated response, not solely relying on law enforcement, and sought clarity on the city's storage program policy and jurisdictional enforcement. Based upon the discussions between counselors and the administration during both the hearing, working session, and after, this docket has been amended as follows. We've defined what is property eligible for storage as personal identification and other things. It does not, however, limit it to a specific way, in a way where there is not room for growth for that list to change. It says essentially that it means to include, so that it ensures that those, those aspects are included in property eligible for storage as defined now. It changes, previously it said regular revision of the shelter list, and now says daily and regular revision, because it's going to require, the ordinance is dependent upon a shelter being available, and so this requires the city, which I think the city already has a system, where they daily see whether or not there are shelters available or shelter space available. The regular revisions are because if they're going to implement this throughout the day, they have to make sure that they're tracking whether or not shelter is still available throughout the day. We made it so the offer of shelter and transportation to a shelter must be made clearly. Previously, the offer of shelter was, was expressly made, but the ability to be transported to that shelter was only made upon request. This requires that they must inform that individual that they have the right to be transported to shelter. Notice of this ordinance must now be made in each language that meets a language access need, as determined by the Office of Language and Communications Access. We removed the fine, that came up a number of times from different folks. Now, there's a verbal warning in place, but the fine aspect of this, there was a concern that fines would follow folks around, people wouldn't pay them, and so the fine aspect of this is removed. The Boston Police Department, during our working session, made clear that the, the goal for them on the fine wasn't the collection, but rather that they wanted the ability to not just jump to arrests, and we believe the verbal warning would allow them to, to exercise the same, the same discretion without having to involve a fine process. I added a requirement that the city attend a hearing with the Boston City Council every year to report back to the council on specific, obviously the council can decide at that time what questions they have, but the idea here is that the council will likely have questions about where encampments are, how many times has this been enforced, what, what demographics we're talking about, all of that data, the council can tackle at an end-of-the-year report, or an end-of-the-year hearing, rather, with the city about this ordinance and its implementation. And in several sections, we clarified which department or organization is responsible for that aspect of implementation. There were a number of places in the ordinance where it said the city will, or the city shall, or city staff shall, and we, where we could, we narrowed it down to which specific department is responsible for that specific part of implementation, so that we can better hold folks accountable, and so that folks have a better idea of who exactly is supposed to be responsible for separate aspects of this program. We also added, for instance, one, one aspect of this, the storage policy, there was a section that spoke to a form, regular filing of form for reimbursement or lost in stolen property or lost in damaged property, but there was no process outlined for what happens when that, it doesn't say who that form goes to, who processes that, what the, what the steps are taken after that. That is now clearly delineated, both in the ordinance, and I think, hopefully, in the storage policy that the city independently is working on, for the city of Boston. I want to be clear that I oppose this policy. I've opposed it for every other administration that has done this, under Walsh, under Janey, we have had sweeps or clearing of encampments. The fact that we're still here talking about it should tell you just how blatantly unsuccessful those attempts have been. I believe that this administration is well-intended. I applaud and support their efforts to add low-threshold housing and seek long-term solutions. I think missing in this conversation is what actually leads to long-term success, which is, the state really has to invest in this issue, they really have to invest in long-term care beds. We have a deficiency in the city, not just in the city of Boston, but in the state, we have a lack of long-term care beds, whether that's dual diagnosis, folks who are dealing with both mental health issues and addiction issues that work in tandem. We don't have enough shelter spaces for them, we don't have enough programming for them, and we don't do a really good job from a state and a municipal level of connecting folks and making sure that there's no drop-off in between each one of those steps. As it regards this policy before us, the sweeps and clearing encampments, of encampments have failed in every single city that has attempted, attempted this. There's no city that anybody can raise up as an example of this policy being successful. There's no study or test case that this, that anyone can hold up and say that the clearing of encampments has actually been successful, whether that's in Los Angeles, New York, Denver, Portland, Seattle. This has been attempted here in Boston a number of times. There's nowhere where this process has actually worked. The Journal of American Medical Association has published a study just this April that showed involuntary displacement causes a significant, a significant spike in mortality, overdoses, and hospitalizations. The federal government published a study in 2021 that found that cities have spent millions of dollars clearing out encampments, that just results in essentially moving the homeless population of a city from one location to another location, spending millions of dollars, getting worse health outcomes. My issue with this policy, beyond just the health aspects of it, comes down to issues with jurisdiction as well. This policy is restricted to city of Boston properties or public ways. In other words, we have encampments that are now currently, or a unencampment that is currently showing up in the Stony Brook Reservation in my district, other folks have had them show up in different places and locations. It is unclear how the state will work in tandem with the city to, to do this process. As the council knows, this ordinance was submitted under a 60-day order, meaning that if we don't vote on it, it becomes law, just, just by lack of action, which would be next week, I believe. And though I ultimately do not support this policy and will not be voting for it, I have no doubt that this amended version that is before you, that was done in collaboration with the administration, with Corporation Counsel, who has vetted every change, and the, and this council, is a better version of this ordinance than, than the 60-day ordinance, as it, as it is in its sort of first draft, and that should the council vote to pass this policy today, that it should be in this amended version, and not in the original version that was submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The, the Chair recognizes, before I recognizes, recognize Counsel Baker, I'm going to go with Counsel Baker, Counsel Mejia, and we'll take it from there. Counsel, Counsel Baker, you have the floor, and then Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
More just a procedural, procedural question, Mr., Mr. President. So, are we voting for amendments? If that passes, we vote for that amended version, if maybe through, through the Chair to the, to the Chair?
Counsel Royal, there is a question on the floor from Counsel Baker. Would you be able to respond to that?
Yeah, so here's the, here's the process, just for folks, this is a little different than a regular ordinance that comes from the council. Before you, is a fully amended version of this ordinance, all of the amendments are in one, so you're just voting one time on the amended version of this ordinance. If this ordinance receives seven votes, then it goes to the mayor's desk, the mayor signs it or not, and then the ordinance, based on its own language, doesn't actually take effect for another seven days after the mayor signs it. If you vote no, if seven votes come back in the nay, we then have to pull, so then the amended version is, is rejected, but we then have to actually vote on the original version that was presented with no amendments, and then if that receives seven votes, then it goes on through. If that receives seven nay votes, then it also is done. So, basically, if, if seven or more folks vote no, then you have a secondary vote on the non-amended version, the original version that was filed. If seven people vote yes on the amended version, then that's the end of it, the amended version goes up.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. Thank you, Counsel Baker. Let me, let me go on to Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I really do appreciate my colleagues' remarks. So, you know, sometimes we come into this chamber, and we're just trying to figure out where we stand with things, and so I reached out to some folks, and I learned of a coalition of churches that have been directly impacted and actively working towards a just and humane resolution at Mass and Cass. And so, these are just some notes from the coalition. The coalition is comprised of thousands of members and constituents of the city of Boston. It states here, "We are committed to continue assisting our city, government officials, and partners in addressing the deep-rooted and complex issues and needs of these individuals. We have served in different capacities for close to 14 years. We appreciate the dedication, work, and service that has been done over the years, and have tirelessly supported many of these efforts. This coalition has continued to serve in areas like assisting with detox programs, jobs assistance, counseling, housing, with most daily service for more than a decade. We believe that, that just as mental and physical care is needed in our community needs, spiritual care as well. That is why, as a way we support the plan that have been put forward, and we are committed to continue the continuity of care for those we know need our services more than ever." With that in mind, they're asking the city to make space and time available for this care that they have provided, and has helped lead them, and many women, to overcome addictions, trauma, mental illness, and so much more. Going back to their notes. Currently, we, we have been provided Bible study at the Roundhouse Hotel that has been closed. Since its opening, we have been providing a church service every Sunday morning at the Engagement Center, and would like to continue these efforts as we have seen people be restored and build community and become models of hope for those we serve. We have been working with the city on assisting with the ordinance and if and when passed. We ask for access to locations where we can continue the spiritual care that we have been providing, as the city and partners provide other care that is needed. We seek, we seek this and that, and not, or this approach. We are not asking for funds or resources. What we are asking for is access to provide this care to those that voluntarily seek it at these locations. We are a coalition of churches. And, and so, for me, I, I think it's important, and I understand that, you know, we have to have separation of church and state, but I, I think it's important for us to recognize the humanity. separation of church and state, but I think it's important for us to recognize the humanity of this decision that we're about to make and making sure that we are censoring the lives of the people who are living in Mass and CAS, and I think it's important for us to just honor that. And I just wanted to read this into the record as we continue to move through this process. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Mihia. Council Fernandez-Anderson, did you want to go? Were you up next? The chair recognizes Council Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope you don't mind, I just sit.
That's fine.
So, after the hearing and the working session, I believe that we needed more time to really elaborate on the plan, but the fact of the matter is that this ordinance does not address a plan, but it addresses tent removal. It's just simply a tent removal ordinance. I think that my colleagues and I, I'd like to thank the Chair, Council Royal, who I think had tremendous patience in executing this beautifully in terms of defining terminologies within the ordinance to bring us this amendment today. However, I would like to go on record and say that, understanding some of the most of, a lot of the best practices, or having done my research on harm reduction and working in it, I do feel that if we are to vote on this today, and I believe that my colleagues, I think that there are seven people here that are going to vote for it already, and from the beginning, I was very clear that I agree with removing the tents, however, that the aftermath was going to adversely impact District 7, considering that the police department, whether or not they have the resources or capacity, have gone on record stating that they were not able to sustain or contain the situation as is today. The concern, I think, at large for the community is not just, will you remove the tents? Will you be able to remove the tents with the ordinance? Rather that you, already with the powers that they have, with the laws as is, they are not actually addressing folks just looting and hanging out and by the dozens, if not hundred. And so, and that seeping into Orchard Gardens, South End, people's backyards, people's doorsteps, and obviously the crime and the issues that come with it. And so the police department in the hearings and working session tried to, I think, made an attempt to reassure us that they would be able to contain the situation, meaning that even if they remove the tents, aside from removing the tents, that they were going to be on top of it, not allow people to hang out by the dozens and looting and creating all of these chaos in the community. And so we felt, we didn't feel reassured, then we asked for, we asked for more information on the plan itself. What came back to us recently, for the record, for those of you watching, is a timeline that basically would show you what would happen from the time that, or what has taken place from the time that the administration filed this ordinance, all the way to the time of tent removal. It doesn't actually address the question about the timeline thereafter. So after you remove the tent, what happens, or some sort of comprehensive plan in the interim of whether it be shelters with enough capacity or supportive harm reduction services, or that we were going to build, or all the way up to the time when they build the Long Island Shelter, or sorry, Long Island Bridge. And Long Island itself needs renovation, so the bridge is not the answer, and so that's unknown, whether it's going to be three years or up to five years that we would have to wait. So I'm not confident or feel, I don't feel reassured that any of this has comprehensive plan. There's no additional budget to address those issues. However, today, here before us, is an issue of, if we remove the tents, is that harm-reducing? Is that better? Going into a shelter, is that better than being in tents? And the police or providers not being able to go inside the tents and offer services, is that safer than people being placed in shelters even when they are over capacity? So I will be voting yes to remove the tents because I believe that it's the first step to addressing this issue and working closely with Boston Public Health Commission, with the Boston Police Department, along the plans or the scope that they've given us, but hopefully to hold them accountable and bring them back into the chamber if necessary to address it when they are not doing it properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I first want to voice my support, also my concern for my fellow city employees, our first responders, Boston Public Health workers, SEIU, ASME, who I feel have been forced to work in unsafe conditions for far too long, so I do just want to start by saying that. We asked two months ago, on September 1st, for the Boston Public Health Commission to declare a state of emergency in the area of Massachusetts Avenue and Malneacast Boulevard. We were ignored. We waited nine days, during which the Boston Police arrested and Suffolk County prosecutors charged a man with assault to murder with a knife. On September 25th, the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery, which I chair, held a hearing regarding a resolution calling for a state of emergency and to also discuss the humanitarian crisis, inviting representatives of this administration to share with the public their knowledge about the ongoing humanitarian crisis. Here we are today, almost in November, and I think the council, the representatives of the people, have a right to ask, to verify before we trust. And given the lack of responsiveness and transparency, I'm not entirely comfortable telling my constituents in the South End that they should trust at all. The administration needs to be clear about its plans for housing, whether it's low threshold housing in the South End, the proposal at Franklin Park, or any other intentions. To compound a humanitarian crisis by refusing to share with the elected representatives of the people of the city of Boston, by delaying and obfuscating, the throwing insults into the press, this administration has taken a tragic situation, and I believe has made it worse, by eroding the people's trust and the government's willingness to be open and forthright. The tents need to come down, but the people of Boston deserve an explanation of what happens next, and they deserve answers that they have been denied them dating back before the two months ago when we declared, or asked to declare a state of emergency, when only more violence and heartbreak we know continues to visit this area. So, thank you, Council President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The chair recognizes Council Baker, then I'll go to Council Louie Jean. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I rise to first, thank the Chair for making the amendments, there's some good clarification amendments in there, although I still will be voting no. This is, and it says it right in the ordinance, it's doubling down on low threshold housing, and low threshold housing says there's no, there's no need for sobriety, there's no need to get off the illicit drugs that people on the street are doing. I say we should be talking about treatment first. The Chair had touched on long-term beds. If we spent the money on long-term beds at the beginning of COVID, where we spent the money on the Roundhouse and places like that that have already been shown to be failures, then we would have hundreds of beds that could be long-term beds, and we would actually have to be able to go into this situation systematically, five people a day, five people a day. There's hundreds of people down there today that I believe could probably be arrested and put in jail because they're down there preying on the populations there. Again, Mr. President, I'll be a no, this is handcuffing us into housing first, this is mandating that we give housing to people that show up and because they have a tent, they get a house. It's got to be treatment first, and then the carrot at the end would be that housing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Baker. The chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. We obviously all recognize that it's a humanitarian crisis over Mass and CAS, and we have been working on solutions, and I believe if there's anyone who had the solution, it would have already been on the table. Yesterday, I was speaking to some of the wear security folks who are down there and who are just also talking about how untenable the situation is. We had, as the Chair said, we had a seven-hour hearing, we had a nine-hour hearing, the Boston Police Department was here, was here, we had the Boston Public Health Commission talking about the need for this ordinance, police officers, so it just, it runs the gamut of those who are serving our city, who are down there and who are saying from our experience and from our work down there that we need to do something in order for us to address this crisis. I don't think that this is going to be what saves us. I don't think that this is ultimately going to be the solution, but can it be part of what's getting us there? I believe so, as long as we are protecting people's First Amendment rights. One thing that's different here, and I do appreciate the edits, when we were here and the Chair took a lot of our edits into account, we're talking about ensuring that there is a bed available, there will be a place for folks to sleep. It's not a house. I wish it could be that we were at the place where everyone could get a house who needed one, right? Housing is a human right, but we're talking about beds and cots, which isn't ideal, but it's going to at least get folks, ensure that folks have a place to sleep. We know that it has to be a housing and a treatment model. We don't have enough treatment beds, and we don't have people in treatment for a long enough time. And so what encourages me here is that this does acknowledge that people need shelter, and it acknowledges that the tent situation is untenable. Now I want to make a clarification, because something that I fear when we're talking about the tents, is that the reason that we don't want the tents is because it's ugly or because it's not aesthetically pleasing. When what, in reality, what makes me nervous and what makes me afraid is that there's tremendous amount of harm happening to people in the area as a result of the tents and as a result of unsustainable situations. So I don't think that this is the silver bullet, but because there is no silver bullet. We're talking about people who have been harmed by companies who made billions of dollars in profit off of ensuring that we had an opioid epidemic in our cities across this country. And so we have to, you know, have to have all hands on deck in having an approach that includes ensuring that people have a place to sleep at night, that helps nudge them into treatment, and I think this is going to be hopefully part of the solution, and we obviously still have so much work to do. We have a lot of folks who have ideas that we need to learn from in terms of how we're addressing the issues of Mass and CAS. There are so many providers who I believe in, Boston Healthcare for the homeless, Victory Programs, who are not offering services down there because of how untenable it has become for their own safety, right? When talking about the safety of our city workers, we're talking about the safety of our providers, and also the safety frankly of our most vulnerable populations down there. Those who are coupled, LGBTQ folks in Mass and CAS, especially our trans population that are unsafe, drug users, all of these folks that are vulnerable, so this is not the solution. I will be voting yes because it needs to be part of a solution as we continue to work together as a city, as providers, to help find a solution. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. Anyone else looking to speak? I will speak briefly. No one wants to speak before me? After this, I will give Council Royal the opportunity to speak last, but I'll speak very briefly. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Royal. I will be voting yes on this proposal for different reasons. The number-one reason is these tents need to come down. They've been up long enough. We should never have the situation in the city of Boston again where people living in It's the responsibility of cities and towns across New England to support their residents in need, and that includes getting them into detox, getting them into long-term housing, getting them access to employment and training. But Boston can't sustain that level of services for people in need, not just through New Eng, throughout New England, but actually throughout the country. I was a probation officer for eight years, and pretty much my entire job was getting people into drug treatment programs that tested positive while on probation, and getting someone into a detox program was very difficult. As Council Baker knows, you could spend your whole day trying to get one person in if there is a bed available, but I guess my point is there are not enough detox beds across New England. That's where our money should be invested, into detox programs, into drug treatment programs. Getting people sober, getting people clean, that's the number-one priority. You can't, based on my experience as a probation officer, someone using under the influence of drugs cannot sustain themselves living in an apartment. That's based on my experience as a probation officer. The other part I want to discuss is these tents, the level of violence that has taken place on Atkinson Street throughout Mass and CAS, sexual violence, rapes, stabbings, shootings. We should never allow that type of situation ever again to occur in the city. I had the opportunity recently to talk to a former fire commissioner in Boston, and that situation on Atkinson Street should have been shut down on day one. You can't block access to a fire truck, you can't block access to a police truck or an Certainly, this proposal will help on taking down tents, but the bigger issue is we have to be, we have to ensure that cities and towns across New England are doing their part and they are not doing their part. They're coming to Boston on a bus, and Boston's responsible for them and their social services. We can't sustain that any longer. We are compassionate people, but we don't have the financial ability to do that any longer. But we also have to be more aggressive on people in Atkinson Street, Mass and CAS, that are dealing drugs, that are engaged in violence, that are engaged in assaults. We can no longer look away and allow that type of terrible treatment, especially to women, take place ever again in the city. What I'm also concerned with is, as what my colleague from Roxbury has also mentioned, is what is the impact this will have on surrounding communities, surrounding neighborhoods, Nubian Square, Clifford Park, many neighborhoods throughout the South End and their parks, Andrews Square in South Boston, Mary Ellen McCormack, Mowgli Park. I had the opportunity to talk to the police commissioner, and he assured me that that is a top priority of the Boston Police, is dealing with people living in and around Mass and CAS or Atkinson Street after these tents are down. But we can't allow them to continue that activity in people's neighborhood. Residents demand that we stand up for them, and we can't tolerate that type of disrespect to residents across the city, impacting quality of life, impacting public safety. So my major focus going forward is really not the housing situation, it's the quality of life of people in and around these neighborhoods and these businesses. They pay huge property taxes, they get very little from their property taxes in terms of city services. A lot of these companies that live, that work around this area are ready to leave the city because we feel them. But I think we need, as a city and as a council especially, need to get back to basics, representing the impacted communities, making sure that we address quality of life issues, public safety concerns, making sure our streets are cleaned, our parks are safe for kids so kids can play soccer, kids can play baseball, elderly people can go for a walk. Our parks are not for the homeless community to use drugs. That's not what a park is. A park is for young people to exercise. We owe it to them to provide the best parks in the city. Having said that, I'm going to vote yes, but I'm going to work closely with the police commissioner and with the Public Health Commission. commissioner and with the Public Health Commission, and I am disappointed in them. I don't, I feel like they haven't given us the answers that we need, that we deserve. I don't, I don't feel like they have engaged us and provided the right information as well. I'm, I'm confident that we, we can get the information, work with Commissioner Cox, but we need to make sure Public Health is also on board, working with this body, because we, we can't just be a rubber stamp and not take our job seriously. So we, we're going to have to hold Public Health accountable in addressing a lot of these outstanding concerns that everyone here has mentioned. Thank you.
No further comments. Let me, let me give it back to Council Royal, but before I do, I, I do want to give everyone that hasn't spoken yet the opportunity to speak, and then we'll go right to Council Royal. I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. You have the opportunity to speak as long as you want, but then I'm going to give Council Royal the final word. The Chair recognizes Council Royal. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to take a moment to thank our members of the community who are currently experiencing homelessness, who took time to come to our hearings and to our working session and spoke with me off the record about their concerns. I think if I have one request here in how we carry out news coverage of this and how we talk about this is to remember that these are human beings, these are people. We often talk about mass and casts and tents and people experiencing addiction or homelessness as problems to be solved rather than people who deserve care and who are people's daughters, parents, sons, and who deserve a level of care and access to care. When, you know, we talk about this policy before us, I oppose this policy specifically because it deals with furthering, to me, you know, everybody talks about we need to do something, there should be something done, but first, do no harm is a saying for a reason. And the studies and the data that we have on this show that this hasn't been proven to reduce harm. And in, in any case, it hasn't even been proven, the study from April states that there's never been a test of this where it has a neutral impact on harm. It has always increased harmful outcomes. One of the things I couldn't define here, which I know people wanted defined, was what practically available shelter means or what available shelter means. One of the things that the city made clear is that the city has never not had, according to the city, unavailable shelter. There's never been a period of unavailable shelter. And one of the problems we had with trying to define what available shelter was, was essentially that the city has a pretty broad definition of what that means. And so we have dozens of individuals in our homeless shelters who are literally sleeping on floors in facilities that don't have shower facilities and things of that nature. And so often this council will say things like, we need more beds, we want beds. But the reality, the practical reality, is that when this goes into effect, there will be people who are sleeping on floors in, in shelters. And unless we do a secondary effort from the state and from the city to fund more actual beds, that's not going to be sustainable. There's a reason why people are choosing to not enter into our shelter systems, and I hope that folks dig into that and look into the claims and the issues of violence and assault and things that we have heard and theft that we have heard about at our shelters that make it so that people don't want to go to them. It is more than just the individuals who are currently residing on Atkinson Street who access our shelters on a day-to-day basis. And I think that making sure that we are investing real money in this, if this is to go through, and I hope that if it does go through, it goes through in this amended version in form, that we put money both at the state and local level at increasing long-term care beds, because that is where the disconnect is. If there is no long-term care, if we don't have access to long-term care, if you have a priority list for long-term care that involves having to come from incarceration, which is often the case in many places, there's sort of two waitlists. There's waitlist for folks who are not currently incarcerated and a waitlist for folks that are. And all of these things, forcing folks through that carceral system is harmful. And so the more beds we can create for long-term healthcare needs, the better we are and the more we can provide new shelter space that actually has beds and cots and things that folks can sleep on rather than floors, the better. What I will ask for here, Mr. Chair, is that the vote be a roll-call vote, and then we go forward from there. If we have to have a secondary vote, then we'll do that. If not, then we're fine.
Thank you, Council Royal.
Thank you.
Council Royal, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 1373 in a new draft. Mr. Clerk, we're going to do a roll-call vote.
Roll-call vote on Docket number 1373 as amended. Councilor Royal?
No.
Councilor Royal, no. Council Baker?
Nay.
Council Baker, nay. Council Brayden?
Yes.
Council Brayden, yes. Council Coletta?
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Durkin?
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn?
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara?
No.
Council Lara, no. Council Louie Jean?
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Meheer?
Present.
Present. Council Meheer, present. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Rurrell?
Yes.
Council Rurrell, yes. Nine votes in the affirmative, three votes in a negative, and one vote present.
This docket, as amended, has passed. We're on to matters recently heard for possible action. Before we get to that, I want to do the approval of the minutes from the beginning, which is the approval of the minutes, seeing and hearing no discussion of the matter. The Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Mr. Clerk. We're doing matters recently heard. Mr. Clerk, we're going to go on to matters recently heard for possible action. Could you please read 0410?
Docket number 0410, petition for a special law relative to an act increasing the maximum amount of fines which may be imposed for violations of ordinances and authorizing the city of Boston to place municipal charge liens on certain properties in the city of Boston for non-payment of any local charges, fees, or fines.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Royal. Council Royal, the Chair of Government Operations, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Government Operations held the hearing on Monday, October 23rd at 10:00 a.m. on Docket 0410, petition for a special law regarding an act increasing the maximum amount of fines which may be imposed for violations of ordinances and authorizing the city of Boston to place municipal charge liens on certain properties in the city of Boston for non-payment of any local charges, fees, or fines, sponsored by Council Liz Brayden and Council Ruthie Louie Jean, and referred to the committee on February 10th, 2023. I'd like to thank my council colleagues, Council Brayden, Council Louie Jean, Council President Flynn, Council Durkin, Council Murphy, and Council Rurrell for attending. I'd also like to thank the administration for attending, Chief Ashley Groffenberger, the Chief Financial Officer and Collector Treasurer Commissioner, Nick Arianello, who's the Commissioner of Assessing, Kelly Mackey, the Assistant Commissioner of A&amp;F at ISD, Dennis Roach, the Superintendent of Waste Reduction, Gerard Gorman from Public Works, and John Blackmore from Code Enforcement, the Department of Public Works. This proposal aims to address the issue of stagnant fines for ordinance violations in the city of Boston. The existing maximum fine of $300 unchanged for over three decades has failed to deter violations and violators, leading to a perception that fines are merely a minor cost of noncompliance. There were unsuccessful attempts to increase the fine limit to 1,000 many, many years ago. This proposal seeks to amend the 1854 Charter, raising the maximum fine to 2,000 and implementing regular inflation adjustments. Furthermore, the bill advocates for a introduction of municipal charge liens for non-payment of local charges, fees, or fines, emphasizing the urgency of ensuring public peace, health, and safety. I recommend that this matter remain in committee now for a working session. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Royal. This docket, 0410, will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, can we read Docket 0153, please?
Docket number 0153, order for a hearing regarding biannual review of the Boston Employment Commission and Boston residents' job policy.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Meheer. Council Meheer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, October 24th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m., the Boston City Council Committee on the Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development held a hearing on Docket 0153. Order for a hearing regarding the biannual review of the Boston Employment Commission and Boston residents' job policy. This matter was sponsored by Council Louie Jean, Rurrell, and Anderson, and referred to the committee on January 11th, 2023. I was joined by my colleagues, Council President Flynn of District 2, Council Brayden of District 9, Council Louie Jean at large, Council Rurrell, District 4, Council Murphy at large, and Council Flaherty at large. For the administration panel, we were joined by Jody Sugarman-Brazin, who is the Deputy Chief of Worker Empowerment, Christopher Brown, who is the BRJP manager, Matthew, Matthew Rezenger, who is the Senior Economist for Boston Planning Development Agency. And for our community panel, we were joined by the Chair of the Boston Employment Commission, Joe, Joe Cal, J.C. Burton, and also Darcey Hood, Manager of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, DMO Construction Testified. The administration panel presented on the economic impact analysis requested by the BEC. We learned that requirements continue to fall short of the ordinance. For example, 23% of the construction workforce are Boston residents, which is far lower than the 51% goal. We got work to do, y'all. Essentially, no trade met the requirements. There is still a lot of work that needs to be done for the city to ensure that we are including more people of color, in particular, black, black women and Boston residents. Currently, we are missing out on 1.38.5 million dollars. Let me repeat that again. We are missing out on one, let me just say that again, 138.5 million dollars. 138 million dollars that could be going back to our residents because we are not hiring Boston residents. That was, however, a little glimpse of hope with one in particular project that is currently underway, providing that, proving that it is possible to meet the BRJP requirements. I am hopeful that we will continue to seek ways to do better so that we can do right by our residents. So I just would like to just go on the record and just say, you know, I've been here on the council for three and a half years. I've been to these biannual hearings, you know, year after year, and we keep hearing the same thing and seeing very little results. And while I'm encouraged by the administration's revisions and their ability to dive deeper into the data, I still find it unacceptable that, you know, we have folks who want to enter into the construction field, but the contract goes to the lowest bidder, making it near too impossible for black and brown contractors to actually get a piece of that pie. Then we have it set up here in the city of Boston where you have to be a city resident in order to have a city job, but then you can't afford to live in the city, and you have to fight to have supplemental rental supports for our city employees. And I just don't see a pathway towards real justice unless we're really serious about amending the current ordinance to reflect the need of today, which is why I'm really excited that our office has been working in partnership with the Boston Jobs Coalition to figure out how we can build a, a city that does not leave black and brown people behind and centers the dignity and affirms people's ability to earn livable wages. So I look forward to working with my colleagues on developing an amendment, which is going to be called the Chuck Turner Act, and want to just speak into existence those who have come before us, who have been fighting in the front lines, and here we are, decades later, still trying to get a piece of that pie. So we're going to keep this in committee as we do, but I don't think we have to wait every, as, as a mandate, to have these every six months just so that we can talk about, see where we're at. I think we need to get beyond that and put some pens and paper and actually fix the problem so that we don't have to keep having the same conversation for the sake of having a conversation. So I'm going to be keeping this in committee, and I appreciate the opportunity to make remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Meheer. This docket, 0153, will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket 1449, please?
Docket number 1449, order for a hearing to review the mental health and wellness resources available to the city of Boston employees during the COVID-19 pandemic and beyond.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin. Council Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I convened my maiden hearing yesterday afternoon on mental health resources and wellness resources available to our city workforce. I want to thank my colleagues, Council Ruthie Louie Jean, Council Liz Brayden, and Council President Flynn, for participating with thoughtful questions and passion for the subject. I want to thank our panelists, Chief of People Alex Lawrence, Director of People and Culture Brenda Hernandez, EAP Director Ulrich Johnson, Director of Health and Benefits and Insurance Emma Bledser, Chief of Boston EMS and Hooli, and from the Boston Health Commission, Chief Behavioral Health Officer Dr. Kevin Simon, as well as the Director for the Center of Behavioral Health and Wellness, Samara Grossman. The panelists' insight and answers were very helpful, and I greatly appreciate their dedication to the well-being of our public workforce. Over the course of the hearing, we talked about the need to promote a culture of wellness and reduce stigma around mental health needs. We reviewed the array of resources available to city workers, such as the Employee Assistance Program and First Responder Peer Support Network. Particularly for EAP, we discussed benefits of having this resource in-house and that their services are available to family members of city workers as well as retired city workers. We reviewed how critical it is to have a diverse care team that reflects the diversity of our workforce so that all Boston workers can feel like they are truly seen and heard when they reach out for help. The city has been investing in mental health resources available to workers. The AP's budget has more than doubled since the outset of COVID, and a series of workshops is being planned next January, which I've heard will include central staff and staff of the city council, so that's something I'll keep everyone updated on. The workshop was, the workshop sounds like it's going to be something that will make a real dent in letting the resources that are available to city workers be known. And I want to reflect on a comment made by Dr. Simon. It's important that we, for us to know the resources available to city workers so that we can share them with our team and others. So I want to be, I, I did share during the hearing, I will be preparing a list of resources available to city workers. My office is working to compile a list of these, and I will share them with my fellow council members. And I recommend that Docket 1449 remain in committee. I also want to thank central staff and particularly Shane Pack for his work helping me with my first hearing. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Durkin. Before we go on to motions, orders, and resolutions, just want to congratulate Council Durkin. Excellent first hearing, and congratulations, well done. Mr. Clerk, could you please read Docket 16? Yeah, okay. Yeah, that, that docket will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, can we read Docket 1630, please?
Docket number 1630, Council, Council Louie Jean and Coletta offer the following: Resolution celebrating the centennial of the Declaration of Republic of Turkey and 28th Annual Boston Turkish Arts and Cultural Festival.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. May I suspend Rule 12 and add Council Baker as an original co-sponsor?
Hearing, no objection. Council Baker is added. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jean.
Thank you, President Flynn, and I want to thank Erku Gumule for being here from the Turkish-American Cultural Society of New England and for bearing with us. We are, my office is honored to file this resolution recognizing the centennial of Turkey's independence, which was founded on October 29th, 1923, by Mustafa Kemal Adeturk. And we're marking, October 29th marks the 100-year centennial, celebrating a century of progress, democracy, and, and culture. The Boston Turkish Arts and Cultural Festival, there's a delightful little book about it, is now in its 28th year, and it's played an essential role in promoting Turkish heritage and foster-
and fostering understanding between diverse communities in the Boston area. As a celebration of the significant centennial, it's important to recognize and honor the contributions of the Turkish-American community and the deep-rooted friendship and cooperation between the United States and Turkey. The Boston City Council is going on the record to proclaim October 29th to be the Turkish Republic Day, city of Boston, and we will, are asking the city of Boston and the Property Management Department to raise the flag of the Republic of Turkey on the third flagpole this Sunday, October 29th, so that, invite everyone to attend. I am grateful that I'm able to file this resolution. I am a big friend of the Turkish community. My family, I have family who are Haitian, French, and Turkish, and have had the pleasure of traveling with them to Turkey and seeing the beauty of Istanbul and of the Bosporus River and of the Blue Mosque and just of the strength of, and the resilience of the Turkish people. So I am incredibly happy to be filing this resolution alongside my colleagues and glad that we're able to celebrate and honor the Turkish community here in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louis Jean. The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I want to thank Counsel Louis Jean for adding me as a cosponsor. The Turkish community has many roots all over Massachusetts. However, its largest community resides here in Boston with a population of nearly 2,000. The earliest known Turkish arrivals in what would become the United States arrived all the way back in 1586. Since then, significant waves of Turkish immigrants to the United States began during the period between 1820 and 1920. The Turkish community has contributed so much to our city's cultural vibrancy and social fabric, and I want to give a shout out to my dear friends and neighbors, I think they're watching, hopefully they're watching, Fegan and Genghis Khan, who moved next door to me on Mama Street almost 20 years ago, who basically became my de facto aunt and uncle. They were the first people in my life to share the beautiful culture and history of Turkey. I've been the beneficiary of many plates of food, so I want to thank them for that. My family developed such a bond with them that my grandmother visited Turkey with them for about a month, and I know that it was such a joyful experience for her right before she passed in 2016. This year is particularly significant as we celebrate the centennial of the foundation of the Republic of Turkey. It is an honor to celebrate the contributions of the Turkish-American community and the deep-rooted friendship and cooperation between the United States and Turkey. I'm thrilled to celebrate with my city council colleagues the richness of this community. Again, a very special thank you to the Turkish-American Cultural Society of New England, thank you so much, and to my colleagues. And I want to encourage everybody to come to the flag raising that's happening on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank Counsel Louis Jean and Coletta for allowing me to be, to be part of this here, and also to congratulate my friend Erkut Garmalay, and also the Turkish people, Boston's, everybody's here, it's a fabric of our communities. We've talked about the centennial, we've talked about the 28th anniversary, and this is just to congratulate Erkut and the Turkish-American Cultural Society for their dedication and commitment to their Turkish heritage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Royal, were you looking to speak?
No.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Counsel Louis Jean. Are you looking to speak?
I always forget to say, I'm looking for suspension and passage, and also want to just thank the volunteers for Boston Turkish Arts and Cultural Festival, and obviously Dr. Reggie Col, sorry, Deputy Director Reggie Colamon, who always helps us with flag raisings and who will continue to help us here, so thank you. The flag raising, I believe, is at Erkut, is at 12:30. Okay. Just want folks to know, 12:30 on Sunday.
Thank you, Counsel Louis Jean. Counsel Louis Jean, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Baker, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1? Before we take a vote, does anyone, would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Counsel Brayden, Counsel Durk, and Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Royal, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Rorale, please add the Chair. Counsel Louis Jean, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Baker, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of this docket 1630. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has been adopted. Mr. Clark, can we please read docket 1631?
Document number 1631, Counsel Louis Jean offer the following: Resolution recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Louis Jean. Counsel Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It happens to anyone, but the statistics are really drawing 1 in 2 female murder victims, and 1 in 13 male murder victims are killed by intimate partners, and intimate partner violence is often at the root of all the forms of violence that we see in our country. Gun violence prevention is domestic violence prevention. As a presence of a gun during a domestic violence situation increases the risk of homicide by 500%, and over half of all domestic violence homicides involve guns. Between 2014 and 2019, 59% of mass shootings were domestic-related, and in 68% of mass shootings, the shooter either killed an intimate partner or family member or had a prior history of domestic violence. I think that it's important for us, it's probably one of the harder difficult, harder issues for us to broach as a society, but really important for us to address if we really want to get at the root, some of the root issues involved in gun violence. I practiced mostly, when I was a student attorney, housing, but I did have some family cases that were heart-wrenching, and personally, as a kid growing up, having to help family members at a really young age dealing with domestic violence issues was really tough. And so I want to express a lot of love to survivors who, through it all, managed to keep going, even with their families. We know that there are a lot of organizations here that are really deeply rooted in the work, such as Casa Mirna, Harbor Cove, Elizabeth Stone House, Fenix House, DeeDee's Cry, Shakira's Story, AFAB, Association of Haitian Women here, and Boston Centro Represente and Patricia Montez, the Massachusetts Coalition for Gun Violence Prevention. All of these groups are working to really center intimate partner violence as an important form of violence that we need to eradicate and dismantle, and it doesn't happen if we're silent. So I rise just to make sure that we are, that we're talking about it, so that folks know that we're talking about it. There are things that we can be doing statewide, there's state legislation that's offered to really look at how we define domestic violence, to include coercive violence as a form of domestic violence. There are things that we could be doing on the federal level, making funding, more flexible federal funding, so that when folks are trying to escape domestic violence situations, that they don't feel like they are burdened or that they can't do so because of financial reasons. When you think about the reasons why folks don't leave relationships in which they are experiencing violence, a helpful way to think about it is those same reasons why we don't leave jobs that we want to leave. Like there are financial reasons, there are social reasons, there are all these reasons that make it really hard for folks to leave dangerous situations. So I just want to rise in support of everyone who has ever been a victim and those who are survivor, to remind folks that the National Domestic Violence Hotline is 1-800-799-7233, or folks can text 888-788 if they want, if they're in need of help. Again, that number is 800-799-7233, or they can text 888-788. There's also a Safelook number, 877-7852020. And I also forgot to mention that the Urban League has been doing some really great work in Black communities to really address issues of intimate partner violence. So just, again, my heart is with those who are surviving and victims of domestic violence.
Thank you, Counsel Louis Jean. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Counsel Louis Jean, for bringing this resolution to the floor. I just wanted to take a moment in addition to uplift all of the community-based organizations that do so much incredible work when it comes to intimate partner violence, particularly for some of our most vulnerable communities. One of the things that we know is that Black and Brown, queer, and trans people are experiencing intimate partner violence and have much higher rates of homicide when it comes to intimate partner violence. And there's a lot of organizations, in addition to the ones that were already mentioned, that do a lot of work, not just for the queer and trans community in the city of Boston, but for people like me who are survivors of domestic violence. I want to take a moment to shout out Black and Pink Massachusetts, and its former Executive Director Jason Lydon, who, in my moment of need, sat down with me and helped me create a plan to leave my situation. So many of us benefit directly from these organizations, and particularly some of our most vulnerable and marginalized communities, who have such direct connection to these issues at such exacerbated rates, that unfortunately, they have so much experience with helping people like me figure out how to navigate and leave dangerous situations. So I just wanted to say thank you. I want to thank so many of our people, particularly members of the queer and trans community, who alchemize so much of their pain and their struggle to help us build the world that we know we deserve, one that is safe for everybody, especially those organizations that are explicitly abolitionist organizations, who help us use restorative and transformative processes to make our communities whole. So thank you, Counsel Louis Jean, for bringing this resolution. I'm happy to support it, and please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Counsel Royal, Counsel Baker, Counsel Brayden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Durk, and Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Rorale, please add the Chair. I wanted to speak very briefly on this, just to highlight the fact that, well, I want to say thank you to Counsel Louis Jean first for bringing this forward. I had the opportunity to work on this issue with former Counselor Andrea Campbell. We had a hearing, city council hearing at Northeastern University on this subject, and just want to thank Counsel Campbell, now Attorney General Campbell, for the important work that she has done for so many years on domestic violence-related issues as well. I also wanted to highlight, when my mother was First Lady, my mother also did a lot of work on domestic violence-related issues. Counsel Louis Jean, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of this docket 1631. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has been adopted. Mr. Clark, we're onto docket 1632.
Document number 1632, Counsel Durk and offer the following: Resolution in support of dedicating New Edgely Road in honor of John Bookston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durk, and Counsel Durk, and you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. At last, I'd like to add Ruzi Louis Jean, Counsel Ruzi Louis Jean, as an original cosponsor.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Durk, and Counsel Louis Jean has added.
Thank you. At last week's council meeting, I was grateful to have the support of my colleagues and cosponsor, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, in passing resolution supporting the Boston Transportation Department effort to transform New Edgely Road into a pedestrian plaza. As discussed last week, this small redundant street in East Fenway has hosted several successful pilots as a pedestrian plaza. I'm so excited to partner with Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, and thank you for your support of the resolution last week. The Boston Transportation Department is looking to make this a permanent transformation of the space, and the website is now available online for folks to view that. The meeting to discuss these efforts is tonight at 6:00 p.m. outside of the Symphony Whole Foods, if anyone is interested in joining. As we explore what this place, space looks like, we are hearing wonderful ideas from residents, from public art to seating to performance space. I know the design elements of the plaza will be informed not only by the residents, but by major cultural institutions that bring so much vitality to the neighborhood. As we consider how our spaces look, it's important to consider what we call our public spaces. Therefore, I filed this resolution in support of dedicating this space in honor of John Bookston. John Bookston was a quiet, yet forceful leader in the community who passed away earlier this month. In my first couple of months as counselor, I was grateful to interact with John on several occasions. John's smile could disarm anyone, and I think because you could see the smile in his eyes, like when he looked at you, he was seeing all the good that was there. He looked at the community the same way, with an intense and earnest optimism. It wasn't just his attitude, though, that made the community a better place. John's dedication to volunteerism was in every single space that he entered. It was inspiring and lifelong. In the Fenway, he could be counted on to be seen at Fenway Cares, food distributions, and street outreach calls, week after week and month after month. And those are just a couple of instances of his civic leadership. He's been on the board of the Fenway Civic Association since 2016. I was grateful to be able to attend John's services a couple weeks ago at Temple Israel and learned, to no surprise, that he carried his optimism and dedication into every single space of his life, not just the civic spaces for which we are indebted to his service. He was a dedicated father. He used to work at the ACLU, the EPA, and I hope my council colleagues will join me in supporting naming this space after him. As you can read from the resolution, he was a strong advocate for our schools, affordable housing, food justice, and a powerful voice for affordable housing and childcare in the neighborhood. His background as a lawyer demonstrated his commitment to social justice, uplifting the voices of the vulnerable through his years of work at the EPA and the ACLU. Before I close, I want to add a couple details that hold a lot of meaningful meaning for me as we aim to make Books and Plaza a reality. John's home in the Fenway was on Mass Ave, just the street, just a street across the street from the space, and one of my final engagements with him and with my office was collecting his survey response in support of creating a pedestrian plaza here. I have his survey response with me here, so I wanted to read his brief comments. To anyone who knew, anyone who knew him can read the, just the optimism and smile, you know, you can see him saying these words. What do you love about New Edgely Road? Today's block party. What do you want to improve about New Edgely Road? More block parties and garden, no cars. What is your favorite public plaza in Boston? Symphony Park and Copley Plaza. Anything else you would like to share? Thank you for asking. He was a wonderful person, and I actually, finally, I want to thank my colleague Counselor Ruzi Louis Jean for adding as an original cosponsor. And I also want to announce that my State House colleague, Senator Edwards, has offered her support to naming this John Bookston Plaza as well, so I want to thank her for that support. And I urge my colleagues to vote on this today, and I will, if, you know, if there are any questions about his leadership, they can be seen in the resolution, and I would like to give Counsel Ruzi Louis Jean a chance to speak as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Louis Jean. Counsel Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just rise in the memory of John Bookston for all of his advocacy to make New Edgely Road a reality. I've had the pleasure of going out for community events there, and it is really, just, it's beautiful to see how our streets can really transform into these gathering places for residents when we think about how we use them alternatively. And so it was great, it's great that we're getting this pedestrianization of the area, which wouldn't have happened but for the advocacy of so many in the community, of the advocacy of the District 8 Office. My office has been really excited to work alongside, and then the folks in BTD, I know Jacob Wessel is really intimately involved in getting this done, and, you know, it just shows the power of residents when they stand up and support in, you know, all the ways John Bookston has a volunteer, as an activist, as a lawyer, as a board member of Fenway Civic Association, just uplifting, you know, the fact that all, a lot of the work that we do really comes from residents demanding us to look at their neighborhoods and communities differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louis Jean. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Counsel Royal, Counsel Baker, Counsel Brayden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Rorale, please add the Chair. Counselors Durk and Counsel Louis Jean, seek suspension of the rules and passage of this docket 1632. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has been adopted. Mr. Clark, we're onto docket 16.
Mr. President. May I?
The Chair recognizes Counsel Louis Jean.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I forgot to ask for a picture after we did the Turkish resolution, and Erkut is still here, so I was wondering if we could quickly take that photo as a counsel.
Yeah, we couldn't do that.
Thank you. Pardon me, President. Thank you.
We're in a brief recess. We're in a brief recess. Would anyone, would anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Docket number 1633, please.
Document number 1633, Counsel Fernando Zanderson offer the following: Resolution to change the name of Fannie Hall, thereby beginning a process of addressing anti-black racist symbols prevalent in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Zanderson. Counsel Fernando Zanderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been working with, first, I wanted to start by thanking New Democracy Coalition and many other organizations, community organizations and advocates, who have been putting the study together, the research and the work, the tears, sweat, and protest, and rallies around eradicating racist symbols, landmarks, streets in the city of Boston. So I thank you, New Democracy Coalition, for leading these efforts and all of your hard work and heart. I decided to file it because I think you guys are getting adjusted to me by now that, well, why rest? Just bring it on, right? If it's right, just do it and let the people decide. Originally, I had filed this and requested for a hearing, but today I will ask for suspension and pass, and allow my colleagues to follow as they will. The resolution to change the name of Fannie Hall, thereby beginning a process of addressing anti-black racist symbols prevalent in Boston, this is following the resolution for, to ask Boston to apologize for its response, its part in the transatlantic slave trade. And in that resolution, we unanimously voted to dismantle systemic systems, but also to get rid of all systemic symbols and landmarks and streets. After the apology, then my council colleague, Counsel Mejia, and my colleague Counselor Worrell, we together sponsored the reparations commission, and then with working with administration, then passed as a reparations task force. The reparations task force has now, or is in the process of putting out an RFP where they will hopefully put out for consultant to be designated to do a study on the legacy of slave trade, but also what reparations should look like in Boston. So I'm going to read it for you, only so that you can have some context and history, and then hopefully make my final remarks there, and then again, ask you for your vote. Reparations for Black people in Boston and around the globe are inextricably connected to the assessment, evaluation, and appropriation, appropriate contextualizing and anti-black symbols. And anti-black symbols foster negative stereotypes, sorry, stereotypes, and are a form of violence designed to humiliate harm and demean Black people. And anti-black symbols reflect and remain hostile to the idea and ideal of achieving Black equality in Boston and achieving a true multiracial democracy in the city of Boston, across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and in our nation. And Boston purports to be a city that makes claims to address anti-black racism, has a public health crisis seeking to address negative conditions, attitudes, and difficulties that hinder Black life in Boston. And according to the 2021 Mass Inc. poll, 51% of all Bostonians believe the name Fannie Hall should be changed because of its deep and tragic association with the transatlantic slave trade, and nearly 70% of all Black Bostonians believe that there should be a name change, according to the name Mass Inc. poll. And Fannie Hall represents the legacy and persona of Peter Fannie, who was a white supremacist, a slave trader, and a slave owner who contributed nothing recognizable to the ideal of democracy. Fannie Hall and the Fannie Hall Quincy Marketplace bears no obvious ostentatious physical markets related to the slave trading of Africans within its immediate vicinity. And the Fannie Hall and the Fannie Hall Marketplace is a public-owned building where less than 0.01% of businesses located there are owned by Black people. And Fannie Hall represents a place where positive history has been made and where democracy-loving people have gathered and organized despite the odious reputation of Peter Fannie. And Fannie Hall is a public thing to be enjoyed by all, even those Blacks and their legacy who were once enslaved in Boston. And the name Fannie Hall retains a legacy of Blacks locally and nationally that connotes exclusion and stigmatization. And the city of Boston would make positive steps towards reparative justice and reconciliation for Black people by changing the name of Fannie Hall and using the name change process as a gateway toward deeper actions, dialogue, and conversations related to racial repair and reconciliation. And changing the name Fannie Hall, of Fannie Hall, to the name of a true freedom fighter such as Christmas Attucks, or Elizabeth Freeman, or Frederick Douglass, just some examples, or of noble concepts such as Freedom Hall. Or Liberty Hall facilitates the flourishing of democracy and educates the local and national public about how we should best use our public spaces and memorials. And through changing the name Fannie Hall, Boston residents can regain its reputation of being the cradle of liberty. And changing the name Fannie Hall would not erase history, but enhance our sense of history and place history in its proper perspective. And the Boston City Council, in a public apology process that acknowledged the city of Boston's role in transatlantic slave trade, now therefore it be that, again, I'm asking that this body votes today to suspend and pass this resolution. My comments are hopefully brief, I always say that, and then it turns into a big story. That, you know, we often talk about the harms that our, and I say "our" ancestors, because at this point, no one is just Black or no one is just White, but the harms that people, that those before us did, and it's a difficult conversation, so sometimes folks are either defensive, or they have vested interest in upholding that system. And so when you look at from, you know, the time of transatlantic slave trade to now, the Black people, and particularly in America, have a very hard time, it's like pulling teeth, to explain our humanity. It's almost as though I have to convince the people that uphold these systems that I'm human enough and deserve better treatment. So you can count from the transatlantic slave trade, then Willie Lynch, then mass incarceration back then, right? Then we're talking about redlining, we're talking about busing, we're talking about BHA, or the sacking of Boston, segregation, all the way to today, and I still find myself in arguments with people to justify why I am human, or why my Black sons should not be commoditized, should not go to prison, should have an opportunity. I still have to explain that systemic racism is a reality in the city of Boston. When you talk to a Black person about systemic racism, they get it. No Black person that I talk to will say, "Oh, no, that's not a thing. That's not real." But when I talk to some of my counterparts, it's a very difficult thing to explain. For some reason, it's almost like as if they're trying to justify why they deserve to continue to uphold a system or symbols of racist structures, white supremacists, because somehow we've all become a victim of white supremacy, a victim of a dominant Anglo-cultured backdrop, a victim, victims of a country, a city, that continues to uphold policies that fail Black and Brown children, that disenfranchises Black communities, that continues to politicize in how we should only receive certain investments in order for me to move up. We have to cry about development not going in our communities that will eventually displace us. We have to cry and beg and explain why it's not reasonable to just condensely populate all service and everything poor and everything harmful in our community. We have to beg for investments, even in the city of Boston. If I say this to those who own high-rise and condos, they'll look at me like I'm silly and I'm not making any sense. Why are symbols important? You can argue all you want, you can say, "It doesn't matter," but symbols are important. It's those very symbols, right, that have made you believe that you are somebody, that you, as a white person, you're welcome here, that victims of violence in white countries, European countries, can be here and be free, and then accomplish something. That anyone can be, can walk around, and if you're a white person in a Black neighborhood, although you gentrify, although you isolate yourself, although you don't contribute, in my mom and pop shops, although you harm and displace us, that still you are safe and you are going to be protected. That is not the case for Black people in Boston. And so symbols are extremely important, because as we look at them, we then understand and internalize, and we become our environment. We viscerally continue to propel trauma, and we continue to believe that we are less than, because, again, we become our environment, and we are told that we are less than, because racist, slave traders, rapists, looters, disgusting savages actually get to be honored with a name. So I ask you to suspend and pass today. Help me for us to be a better Boston. Help me for us to continue to evolve as a people, as a community, so we can all do right by our ancestors, all of them, white, Black, Brown alike, irrespective of our differences, so we can all thrive together in Boston. Thank you.
Would anyone, would anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. In 2019, I had an order for a hearing for a proposed auction block memorial. Part of the problem that we have at Fannie Hall, there's nothing telling the story. And changing the name, taking Peter Fannie's name off Fannie Hall, will still not tell the story. And in that time, in 19, I had asked organizations to stay with me, "Let's have this hearing on the auction block," and those organizations chose to blow the auction block idea out of the water, and subsequently chase Steve Locke out of Massachusetts. He was a Black artist, highly acclaimed artist. I thought it was a great piece of work, but we were unable to have the discussions. Now here it is, a resolution that's ambiguous at best, we want to change, we are supposed to take a name, a name change, but we don't know what the name's going to be, it's just going to take this off. And again, we don't have the ability to do this. This isn't the city of Boston's, they're not the only people going to weigh in on this. So the feds are going to weigh in, the National Historic, the Parks Department, the National Parks Department will weigh in on this, the state will probably weigh in on this. So, again, we're missing an opportunity here. If we suspend and just take a vote, and I'm not going to block the vote, but if we don't have a real hearing on this, we still lose the opportunity to have the discussion. We need, as a society, as Boston, needs to have discussions, because points were made just a minute ago that I would disagree with, but I don't have the ability to go back and forth on it. Hence, why we should have, this should be a real discussion here, not just resolutions, yea, nay, up and down. So, that's, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. I'm going to call on Counsel Fernando Zanderson. Counsel Fernando Zanderson, I do want to give you the opportunity to respond. I would note that in your hearing order, that you do call for the appropriate committee of the city council to hold a hearing on the naming of Fannie Hall, in that, I'm just skimming it over, skimming it, in that the appropriate, basically the appropriate city department, committee would host a hearing. So, want to give you an opportunity to respond to Counsel Baker. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Zanderson.
A couple of things. Counsel Baker mentioned about conversation, that he disagrees with things, but he could not argue back and forth because he's not prepared to do that. Then I guess, the question is, well, then why do you disagree if you don't know what you're disagreeing, or how to disagree? The second part is, in terms of the naming, it's specifically, like, that can take place in a separate process in the right department of the city of Boston, and I think that I'm happy to follow up with a post-hearing. I'm only asking for, to change it, to get rid of Fannie Hall. I'm not specifying, you know, the name, because I think that that's a community process. That will go into a community process, where we'll ask the community, especially the Black community, that, again, that this symbol harms, what the name should be. So it's, and I, and Mr. President, I appreciate that you repeated what I said about filing for, asking for a hearing, and now asking for a vote, but that's precisely what's happening, is that, and that's not unusual, right? is that, and that's not unusual, right? Like, that's happened, where things are filed and you ask for a hearing, but then we vote, and then people change their minds, or the other way around. And so I'm asking for a vote. Thank you, Council Baker, for not blocking the vote. And I think that, again, like, it will go into a community process, and let the community decide, and that is how we do things in a city. Let the other departments, let it be a collaboration, working with the state or whatever else, so that we can determine. Other than that, I would say, as far as the other point that Council Baker made about preserving historical context, you can do that without celebrating a rapist, or a white supremacist, or a slave owner, or, you know, someone who tried to kill black, who was killing black people, and torturing black people, and purchasing, and kidnapped black people, and supporting payments for a ship to enslave black people. It's probably that we would have some sort of like plaque, and again, that goes into community process, parks would weigh in, and they've done it before. I did speak with the chief of parks and talks about how do we preserve the history so that it doesn't, you know, 10, 20 years from now, you know, our kids will know that here was a person that would used to be celebrated, but he was a savage. So, we decided to not honor him by naming this place Faneuil Hall, we decided to just tell the story about it, in a plaque maybe, a small little kiosk that you can read. But we don't continue to name streets, and we don't continue to honor white supremacists and, you know, horrible barbarians by naming big places like that, Faneuil Hall. And then we make intentions in making sure that we bring in black businesses to Faneuil Hall as well. So I'm not asking for something unreasonable, and I think that my colleagues agree that it's not unreasonable. I'm asking simply to vote, to get rid of the name, allow the community process to determine the name, and working in collaboration with the other departments to do it properly so that we don't lose historical context.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Laura. Council Laura, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I think this is just more of a point of process. In 2019, when I was working on the estuary projects that were honoring the 10 victims of the Roxbury murders, the then-mayor, Mayor Walsh, appointed me to the One Boston Commission. And the One Boston Commission was meant to be a group of community members and members of city departments that would have a conversation around what memorializing the victims of the Boston Marathon would look like here in the city of Boston. I use that as an example to say that the city of Boston does have the mechanisms already by which to have these kind of community conversations, in which people can give feedback about what something should be named, how we should memorialize history, and so on and so forth. I think that this resolution is very simple. We are just, as a council, making a statement that we don't want to, you know, name one of our city landmarks after people who were slave owners. I don't think that that is, like Councilor Anderson said, an outlandish request. I think that it's something that I believe all of my council colleagues agree with, and that we can come together in support of. And if there's concern about what the process is, or what does that look like, this is just a statement of support from the city council. And I do believe that the administration has, in different occasions, to memorialize different historical events in the city, put together commissions and community groups that I have been a part of myself, that have been really effective in helping us decide how to memorialize our collective history, and I think that this is also a possibility here. So I'm happy to put my name on and vote in support of it as well.
Thank you, Council Laura. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Royal, and then Council Mahia. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, I'll be brief. I'm going to be voting in support of this as well. I think renaming things, when appropriate, should happen. One of the things, for instance, that I've always looked at and hope that at some point the state looks at, and the city looks at, is Samuel Maverick and Maverick Square and Maverick Station was named after Samuel Maverick, who many historians believe was the first individual to transport enslaved people into Boston, was documented as someone who would have his enslaved folks rape each other to do breeding. He was one of the very first to do a breeding program. And so, the fact that Samuel's Maverick Station exists, and that Maverick Square exists, when I think most people would be horrified with the actual knowledge of him, and, I mean, it's not that hard to find it, it's just a Wikipedia search, folks like that should not have landmarks or locations named after them, they should not become regular parts of our lexicon. And so, I'm in support of this, I'll be voting for this. Personally, I like the ideals aspect of this, but I think community process should decide what does eventually become the name, but I think naming buildings after ideals is a good way to go. So Liberation Hall, for instance, or Freedom Hall, those kinds of suggestions resonate with me. But, again, I think a community process and the agencies that look into this should look into this, but I support this resolution, I support renaming efforts on people like these folks who did monstrous things while alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Royal. The chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Council Anderson for introducing this. I do remember in 2019, then, City Councilor Wu was in support of such an opportunity, right? So I'm encouraged by that leadership, and I think that it's a symbol and an opportunity for Mayor Wu to now, as the executive chief officer of the city, to really utilize her executive power to really help create an opportunity for the community to have a discussion around this. So I just want to, like, name that, as I remember that to be the case, and I do believe community process is really important. And I think that if we are really serious about creating space for people to decide for themselves that this is part of that process, and I think that oftentimes, you know, these are your tax dollars, and I think this is part of the repairing that harm and creating space for that to happen, is what we, as a body, all 13 of us, can do. So I just wanted to just affirm and thank those who have been fighting for this fight a long time, and I see you, Kevin, being on the front lines of this work, and encourage that Mayor Wu is now, has the opportunity to say, "Let's go." So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahia. The chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you. I also want to rise in support of those who have been steadfast in their advocacy. And I want to just share that, you know, I think a lot of times you will be like, "Well, I didn't know that Peter Faneuil was a slave owner and built his wealth off of it, and so it doesn't do me harm because I didn't know." And there are all these instances, and there are all these symbols that we have in our society and in our city that we may not know, but once we do know, it does spark an opportunity for us to do better. And I think I've mentioned this either in discussions about this, or in previous discussions that we've had, because this is not the first time that I know that we've been talking about it in public or on the council in my two years here, but these symbols are powerful, it's important for communities to feel like their city, that they belong, and that we work on, we achieve inclusivity when we affirm people's dignity in how we name and how we don't name things. I've shared this story before, but I'm not sure in what context. When I was a student in Harvard Law School, the crest of Harvard Law School was that of the royal family. The royal family, R-O-Y-A-L-L, built their wealth exclusively on the keeping and holding of slaves, and their first bequest to the university was for the first professorship at the law school that made the law school possible. And I would carry around on campus folders that had the crest of the royal family, there were bushels of wheat, which is what their crest was, is. And I didn't know, for the entirety of my time there as a student, that I was walking around with a folder that had symbols of a family whose wealth was built on the backs of people who looked like me, enslaved folks coming to this country by force and building the wealth of this country. And just because I didn't know as a student, that I was walking around with a folder of the royal family that had crest of bushes of wheat, doesn't mean that I was affirming or agreeing that the royal family, that their wealth was one that was justified for the creation of this law school. And I think there are symbols all the time that we walk around and we're ignorant of what they mean and how, I think Council Fernandez-Anderson talked about the harm that create. I didn't know then, so like, maybe it wasn't cognitively harming me because I didn't know anything about the royal family, but I know now. And students afterwards lobbied and got the crest removed, and now there is a plaque on Harvard's campus that talks about the wealth building of enslaved folks and how it honors them, and it tells the story of the royal family. So I do think that there are ways to do both, making sure that we don't lose history, making sure that we're always talking about Peter Faneuil, and what that meant, and how he was able to build his wealth, how the royal family built their wealth, and honoring those on whose backs the wealth of this country and the wealth of this city was built. And so I do think that this hopefully provides an opportunity to have conversation, because obviously here on the council, there are folks who have differing opinions about, you know, what is the best method to acknowledge the harm caused? Is it through removing the name, or is it through keeping the name? And I do think that we need to have conversations so that folks understand why this harm exists. And so I think it's important for us to have these conversations and this resolution, and I think there are questions in terms of, I don't even really know what our jurisdiction is, is our ability to say that this name should come down, but in support of this resolution and having this conversation on a citywide level about harm caused by symbols to communities that have already been marginalized, even when they don't know who Peter Faneuil is, what we're telling you he is, and the harm that it causes communities. So just rise in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. The chair recognizes Council Worrell.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the original sponsor, and I also want to thank the work that New Democracy Coalition has put behind eradicating the symbols here in the city of Boston. So, thank you to Kevin Peterson, I see my good friend, my lifelong childhood friend, Aziza Robinson, always on the front lines, so I just want to say thank you for this work. While eradicating systemic racism is a complex journey, changing the name of Faneuil Hall, I believe is a meaningful first step, or one of the first steps, and that, you know, these landmarks in our community or in our city of Boston should reflect our values. So, that resonates with me, similar to what Council Royal said, is naming it after, you know, our values, whether it's, you know, Freedom Hall, Liberty Hall, because symbols matter. And it's essential that we begin our journey of addressing anti-black racism by changing this name. I believe this action sends a powerful message about our commitment to justice and equity. The aim should not be able to erase history, but place it in its proper perspective. A new name can symbolize our journey towards racial reconciliation and racial justice. And I just, again, want to just thank you and everyone in the crowds for supporting this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Worrell. The chair recognizes Council, the chair recognizes Council Durkan. Council Durkan, you have the floor.
Hi, I just want to thank my colleague, Tony Fernandez-Anderson, for offering this. I think it's a really well-drafted resolution, and I want to thank my colleagues, especially my colleagues of color, for stepping up today and bringing ourselves to the table. I think the symbols, being someone who's not from the city, oftentimes I don't know what other people bring to the table when they walk into a certain space, or when they have a certain experience. And I, you know, share this with my colleague, Council Fernandez-Anderson, that I've gotten emails on both sides of this, but standing in solidarity with my colleagues, I am going to vote in support of this today. And I also want to share that, being someone who's not from the city, but being from the South, I've been witness to many things, even after the Civil War, being named after people that should never, ever be named, you know, should never be the square of a city, or the square of a town. So, my personal experience being from the South, and realizing the impacts that naming can have on a community, and the health of a community, and the feeling of belonging matters a lot to me. And I'm looking forward to, if there is a hearing, looking forward to the conversation, because I hope that we lead this conversation, and I follow the lead of my colleagues of color in restoration, healing, and a conversation around public spaces and what they mean in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Durkan. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Royal, Council Braden, Council Coletta, Council Durkan, Council Laura, Council Louie Jean, Council Mahia, Council Murphy, Council Worrell. Council Fernandez-Anderson seeks suspensions of the rules and adoption of this docket 1633. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk?
Nay.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket number 1633, Council Royal.
Yes.
Council Royal, yes. Council Baker?
Nay.
Council Baker, nay. Council Braden?
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Coletta?
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Durkan?
Yes.
Council Durkan, yes. Council Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty?
No.
Council Flaherty, no. Council Flynn?
No.
Council Flynn, no. Council Laura?
Yes.
Council Laura, yes. Council Louie Jean?
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mahia?
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Worrell?
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. 10 votes in the affirmative and 3 votes in the negative. This docket has been adopted.
Before we go on to personnel orders, I do want to thank my colleagues for allowing this to have a discussion and to have a vote. Just because we may not support a particular idea or resolution, doesn't mean we should suspend the conversation and not take it up. So just want to acknowledge Council Baker, who mentioned that he didn't want to, he wanted to go forward with the conversation, he wanted to go forward with the vote, and that's the way it should be, even if you are in opposition to something. We're on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1634?
Docket number 1634, Council Flynn for Council Laura.
The chair seeks suspensions of the rules and passage of this docket. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1635.
Docket number 1635, Council Flynn for Council Laura.
The chair seeks suspensions of the rules and passage of this docket. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1636.
Docket number 1636, Council Flynn for Council Murphy.
The chair seeks suspensions of the rules and passage of this docket. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. We're on to late files. We have two personnel late file matters. These late file matters should be on everyone's desk. We're going to take a vote to vote on these late file matters, to add them to the agenda.
Add them to the agenda. What? No, they don't need to be on the desk.
We're going to vote to add these late file matters into the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. These late file matters have been added. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter.
First late filed matter, Council Flynn, it's a personnel order, Council Flynn for Council Baker.
The chair moves for passage of this late file matter, personnel order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read the second late file personnel order.
Personnel order, Council Flynn for Council Baker.
The chair moves for, the chair moves for passage of this late file order, which is a personnel order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this late file matter has been added. We're on to green sheets. The chair recognizes City Council Worrell, then we'll go to City Council Laura. Council Worrell?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to pull docket number 1377 on page 3... I'd like to pull docket number 1377 on page three from the green sheets.
Docket 1377?
1377.
Counselor Worrell, you pulling those other dockets as well?
Yep, I'm also going to be pulling docket number...
Sorry. 1576?
1581. Yep, 1576, 1580, and 1581.
What about 1578?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you read those into the record and then after that, we'll take a vote to ensure that they're properly before the body?
Yes. From the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, docket number 1377, message in order authorizing the Department of Innovation and Technology to enter in a long-term contract for constituent relationship management system for Boston 311 Call Center for a term of up to 10 years. Docket number 1576, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $18,480 in the form of a grant awarded by Catholic Charities Archdiocese of Boston to be administered by the Department of Innovation and Technology. The grant will fund the fellowship program for El Centro IT Training Program graduates. Docket number 1580, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 24 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $60,329 to provide funding for the Boston Police Department for the fiscal year 24 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the Boston Police Cadets Association, filed in the office of the city clerk on October 16, 2023. Docket number 1581, message in order for a supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Police Department for fiscal year 24 in the amount of $60,329 to cover the fiscal year 24 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the Boston Cadets Association. The terms of the contracts are October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be...
Mr. Clerk, could someone shut that door? It's hard to hear the conversation. Thank you, Christine. I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk.
The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in January of each fiscal year of the contract term.
Mr. Clerk, on those dockets, can we poll the committee to ensure that they're properly before the body?
The Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, Counselor Worrell?
Yes.
Counselor Durkin?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Counselor Fernandez Anderson?
Mr. Clerk? These dockets are now properly before the body. The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
So Chair, shall I just give a, you know, describe all of them and then we'll vote on them? All right, awesome.
Yeah, why don't you do that and then we'll vote on them individually.
Awesome. So docket number 1377 is a, Duett is requesting the council's permission to utilize Massachusetts General Law 30B to enter into competitively bid contracts with the 311 CRM vendor for up to 10 years. This provision has been in effect for decades at the state level, but has not been widely adopted at the city level. This longer period contract is in the best interest of the city because replacing the CRM is a massive and high risk undertaken, requiring thousands of hours of effort over a span of 18 months. It will stabilize pricing during a period of intense inflation while also avoiding any unnecessary potential transition costs. Contracts need to be rebid and awarded by December 2023 in order to maintain a maintenance agreement on our existing CRM. The other one is a grant from the Catholic Charities, and this is just going to the fellowship program, El Centro IT Training, for the program graduates. And then we have docket number 1580, which is basically is bringing up all of our cadets, which is the Boston Police Cadet Program, to what the Firefighter Cadet Program is currently receiving. So Chair, those are the four dockets that I'll look to have a vote on. Or suspend and pass.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. Mr. Clerk, we're going to do a roll call vote on each individual docket. We'll start with 1377.
Roll call vote on docket 1377, Counselor Royal?
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 1377 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote on 1576?
Roll call vote on docket 1576, Counselor Royal?
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 1576 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we do docket 1580?
Roll call vote on docket number 1580, Counsel Royal?
Yes.
Counsel Royal, yes. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 1580 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can we do docket 1581, please?
Roll call vote on docket number 1581, Counsel Royal?
Yes.
Counsel Royal, yes. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 1581 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This also has passed. The chair recognizes Counsel Lara. We're still on green sheets. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'd like to ask that for to pull docket 1539 from the green sheets. It is on the top of page 13.
Could you say that again?
It's at the top of page 13.
Okay.
And the docket number is 1539.
Mr. Clerk, can you read that into the record, please?
From the Committee on Housing and Community Development, docket number 1539, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,983,833 in the form of a grant for the Shelter and Services Program 23, awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security, to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Housing. The grant will fund services to non-citizen migrants recently released from DHS custody to provide shelter, food, transportation, acute medical care, personal hygiene supplies, and case management services, and to provide funding to non-federal entities to increase their capacity to shelter non-citizen migrants recently released from DHS custody, including renovations and modifications to existing facilities.
Mr. Clerk, can we poll the committee to ensure it's properly before the body?
The Committee on Housing and Community Development, Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Properly before the body.
The chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. In July of 2023, the city of Boston applied to the Department of Homeland Security Shelter and Services Program for $1,984,463 to support the increased arrival of migrants who were arriving from the border here to the city. The award funding is intended to enable non-federal entities like the city to offset allowable costs incurred for services associated with non-citizen migrant arrivals in their communities. SSP is a continuation of financial support provided by the federal government Emergency Food and Shelter Program, which the city applied for and received funding for in May of 2023. The city was allowed to apply for SSP funding only as an initial recipient of EFSP, and we were also allowed to apply for up to $1.9 million based on the federal calculation using custom and border patrol data. This award is crucial to ensuring that we, as a city, can continue to support migrants that are arriving to Boston. As we've seen all over the news, and not just here in the city of Boston, but all across the state, we are really being strained by the cost of making sure that we're supporting migrant communities arriving here to Boston, and this funding is going to help us ease the burden on our operating budget. Since July 1 of 2022, the city has directly supported over 700 migrant families, more than 2,100 individuals, and we anticipate that our city will continue to play an important role going forward in providing temporary housing and support services until these families can be incorporated into the state's emergency assistance program. So I'm asking that we suspend and pass so that we can get these financial resources to where they're most needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote on this docket, please?
Roll call vote on docket number 1539, Counsel Royal?
Yes.
Counsel Royal, yes. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 1539 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
This docket has passed. Thank you, Counsel Lara. The chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking to remove a matter from the green sheets, docket 1586, on page 15 of the green
Mr. Clerk, can you please read that into the record?
Docket number 1586, from the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for city council action on the designation of the Nazaro Community Center 30-32 North Bennett Street, Boston, Mass. as a landmark, in effect after November 5, 2023, if not acted upon.
Mr. Clerk, can we poll the committee, please?
Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Lara?
Yes.
And Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
It's properly before the body. The chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 1586 was unanimously approved by the Boston Landmarks Commission on September